We are back for the public hearing. Mr. Administrator, we are on item number 29.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Commissioners, this is the first and only public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10 to clarify parking and loading surface standards inside the USA. This amendment simply gives us the ability to provide more certainty and flexibility to developers in the USA related to allowable parking surfaces. We distributed to you the latest in revisions based upon feedback received at the Planning Commission. They were minor technical changes in nature and obviously do not change staff recommendation to conduct your public hearing and adopt the ordinance. We have no speakers on this item.
The Vice Chairman has probably moved the staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Lindley, with no Commissioners in queue to speak. All those in favor of motion on table signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes six zero. Mr. Administrator, item number 30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is your second and final public hearing on the adoption of the one 2017 out-of-cycle comp plan amendment. This one amendment is clean-up in nature and will provide you or provide for consistency in definitions between the land use element and the comp plan with the county's LDRs. Also, we have no speakers on this item.
Staff has probably, I mean, excuse me, Vice Chairman has probably moved staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Lindley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, Mr. Administrator.
We have no further public hearing items, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agenda items?
We do know we have no speaker cards.
Excellent, all right. We are on commission time. We'll start with County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick items. The County Administrator and I were conferring earlier that had the parenthood leave been in place when I was first hired, this would be my first day at work.
There's an exclusion for people like you, though.
The second item, and I put an extra copy at your place this evening, is a case that we resolved right before trial entitled Jan Sebastian versus Leon County. The insurance companies have put in the vast majority of the money. Your insurance company hired lawyer, Dale Scott, and my roper have recommended that you approve it. It's $65,000. I recommend that we approve it as well. I think it's a good deal to get us out of that case.
Do we need to do that this evening?
Yes.
Okay. I think first of all what we need to do is to have a motion to waive the rules to take this item up now?
Yes.
Okay, so motion on table to waive the rules by the Vice Chairman, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor of waiving the rules to discuss this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, we have a motion on table by Vice Chairman for staff's recommendation, the County Attorney's recommendation for settlement, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Any Commissioners in queue to speak? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. The last thing was, and he's not in the room, but I was going to just announce that this is Patrick Kenny's last Leon County Commission meeting as deputy county attorney. He has not left the planet. He is going to be, you'll be seeing him at your blueprint meetings. He's becoming the Blueprint General Counsel effective Monday, and we wish him well. He's a loss to our office, but it's a gain for Blueprint, and we will proceed with filling the vacancy as soon as we can. So anyhow, I wish Patrick well.
Excellent.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have nothing, just enjoy your well-deserved break. Thank you. Commissioner DeLuge.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. We got the NACO Annual Meeting in Ohio next week, and I want to again thank you all for your generosity and allowing me for the last year to traipse around the country and represent you.
Done well.
It's been a rocket ship ride, so anyway, I don't know if I'll see any of you all there. It'll be a great event, and then you may not see me for a little while, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I was, like yourselves, concerned and reflective of the crime wave and the crime data that has come out at sites and against doubts Leon County as being the most violent community in the state of Florida among 67. We really have a choice to, we could sit down and just say that this is a law enforcement issue, but I'd like to put out tonight for consideration of board during our break that this might marinate with the county appointing a citizens' task force to really look at this issue and to see if we can get representative input from the criminal, I mean, justice program at Florida State to lead this review. We talked about, I love Tallahassee tonight, and we, they got a windfall of 35,000 additional dollars to say that they love Tallahassee, and I'm not sure that just merely loving Tallahassee and that 35,000 will change the course in which a trend line of one year followed by a second year and then a third year. And since that data has come out, last week, since we last gathered, we saw a citizen who, according to police records, murdered his mother. Since we last gathered, we saw where a citizen stabbed his wife, and I believe since we last got together, infant was shot. I mean, week after week, these kinds of reports are coming, and our job overall as elected officials is to provide for the health, the safety, and the welfare of our community. And I think that given the high concentration of high-powered criminologists, PhDs, blah, blah, I think we need some help, and more than the people who have been leading the discussion, to be a part of something which the county puts our flag and pins our hopes on recommendations other than the police entities that for three years in a row have not turned the tide. Now, had we fallen to number, dropped to number seven, fell out the top column, went to number eight, nine, or further down the list where we want to be, way down that list? But ladies and gentlemen, we have a trend that for three years in a row, we're number one, and there are no new voices added to the discussion. And in this wake of this number-one label seeming not to move, we need to do something and then put more voices and people involved. So I'm just asking that, as I give consideration to the what-to-do-ness, I might even float a proposal or proposal to us suggesting some other voices that can come into conversation. For years now, I've attempted to secure commitment from the City Commission to create a citizens' review board for policing. For a moment like this and for the accolades and awards, we keep winning for being the number-one most criminal, I'm sorry, violent county, a police board with more than just the police, the PBA, and the City Commission doing all the talking and thinking, it might advance, it might change, but with what we're doing, it ain't enough to change us from number-one, one year, two years, three years, and I guess the way it's going, we will continue in that row. So, Mr. Chairman, I would just say to the Commission what I'm thinking, and if you get a sheet of paper from me and an ink from between now and when we gather again, that's pretty much what, and I would hope that we could exercise some thought, leadership, or whatever, let some more people help us. Also, I'd like to ask, in the interim of our being missing a little bit, if county staff would afford us an understanding, white paper on the referendum process. I know that it's expected that we're to make nomination of, I think, two persons to the, what's that thing? Yeah, to the charter review, and thank you, and like that. And the charter review has the authority, I think, to make recommendations with respect to items that might go on referendum. Is that accurate, Mr. Administrator?
Recommend to you, yes.
Yeah, to recommend?
To you.
To us what we may permit to go to referendum. And I don't want to, you know, cheat and see the answers before, you know, the exam is given, but I really would like a little cheat sheet to see a skeletal of what that process is and what we're expecting from the charter review, and that in those expectations, we're selecting people and personalities who in that arena can grapple with various policy considerations and bring recommendations to us. So I'm just asking for one pager of something skeletal, just a cheat sheet of what charter review and all like that and the referendum process. And would we also, the board, if the charter review did not bring substantive recommendations, are, is this board, our board alone, can we place on the ballot matters of concern such as what Commissioner DeLuge has been referencing lately, and which I agree with him, and that is the issue of, I think it's something like maybe 20 grams or the amount of marijuana that people rested for, something about, you know, drug charges and making that humane and consistent with our times. When I say consistent with our times, I mean, something happened that was a quantum leap tonight. It was just, you know, a small step for one man, but it was a quantum leap for mankind when Leon County passed a, we passed to adopt the idea of Commissioner DeLuge that we would give men too, fathers, the chance to share, I guess, maternity, paternity leave. That was, that was a huge step. So we're concepting new frontiers, new frontiers, and that is the thought a father can, should, ought to be a part of the initial experiences of adjusting to new life, part of a family. And equally as, you know, and that represents evolution, evolution of thought, evolution of ideas, and I think that there is also an evolution in ideas of partnering. I heard the mentioning of our, the reference point of, do you call your mate if you're same-sex, partner, spouse, what have you? But the mere fact that we're having a conversation like that in 2017, 17 years ago, that conversation wouldn't even be on this dais at all, but it speaks to evolution. And what I'm trying to say is, our thought of, you know, marijuana, Mr. Britt, in his own, his own way and style, suggested the uniqueness of being told that he ought to be able to drink, smoke, shoot up, whatever he wanted to do in his house, his house, his body, him, and I think that there is an evolving perspective about marijuana. And it certainly sounds like a contradiction that for a drug that in our state has been declared medicinal, with medicinal value, what makes, what makes a herb, a herb that has been declared to have medicinal value, and what in the hell could be illegal about the rest of it? I mean, it is just a contradiction of terms. This thing is good. Medical science has stood up for it. Voters have stood up for it, and I think that Commissioner DeLuge, your comments and suggestion is speaking to that changing, evolving mind state that people are having and the criminality of, you know, crime is whatever the legislature said is and what we say or what it ain't. It's just determined by vote with the power. So I'm supportive of that and hopeful that we can look at potentially a referendum item. If we don't have the moxie or the wherewithal on this dais, then let us allow for the people who took up drug issues for medicinal value, whether or not the same people in this county who gave overwhelming support, whether or not they think that 20 grams or less should be a misdemeanor. So that's the direction which I'm feeling, and when we come back, I'm hopeful that we can galvanize our support and ideas. I hope to see you guys joining me as we support the final hurrah of our great county president. Salute Brian for outstanding year. You must have a whole lot of free points and to travel around, and I want you to know I got a whole lot of time. I'm willing to go somewhere, but I ain't going to Idaho and Wyoming and stuff like that. I ain't got no kid for, but I'm willing to go to, you know, you know, all up and down the East Coast, you know, California. But Brian has done a great job expanding the horizon of the name Leon County, and for your doing so, the personal sacrifices, Brian, I salute you. It's been an honor to sit by the NACO president for the times in which God has privileged me to do that. To this community called Leon County, Mr. Britt said it today, I think, that not only is Leon County good and a good place, state of Florida, state of Florida ain't bad, and when you get 800 people, Sister Wilson, when you're 800 people a day, the word is out. 800 people a day move to Florida, that's why your office so busy with all them applications every time something get posted. That many people coming here, you can't, you can't hide it. The word is out. It's good, and the living, in the words of the song Summertime, and the living is easy. I respect my colleagues. I thank y'all, and as we take pause to go on break, I'm very, very grateful for the style. I'm grateful for the class with which you perform as Commissioners. God knows that there are other examples, but thank God that, for the example which working with you all, so collegial, and if I have said anything that in any way has offended, I'm never, ever with intention to offend the person of anyone. I just want to be clear that the issues, the policies, the ideas which we put forward, I think you recognize the spirit of me is genuine and sometimes a little intense. So I'm loving every moment of this job, working and serving the people of Leon County. And in your life, and one day sometime down the road, we will all look back on this moment and these moments which we share as probably some of the highlight years of our existence. But isn't it great to recognize that while you are going through the go-through, that you see it and you know it right now, that God is blessing us? So thank you, guys, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know where all that come from. I have no idea. I apologize. I think dinner was very good. That's what happen when a preacher gets full.
Commissioner DeLuge, you've rung in. Do you have comments on Commissioner Proctor's monologue?
Thank you for your kind words. The comments earlier about some kind of task force or something, I just thought that we have a workshop, and that's certainly one of the things we should consider, so.
Commissioner Dozier, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, the only thing I had on my list for comment time is a request tonight I asked the County Administrator about yesterday and got a wonderful summer email back today, and I'm not surprised her staff is already looking at it. So as someone who cut the cable cord a while back, I can't see County Commission or City Commission meetings played live, and I know a lot of other constituents are like that, so I was wondering about live streaming, and it sounds like Matt and others are already looking into this. So just wanted to thank our staff for being on top of things as always. And our Vice Chair had to step out, but wanted to congratulate him. He has moved up in the ranks to first Vice President of Florida Association of Counties. Oh, there you are. He just wanted to sit down and see what it looks like from, uh-huh.
Just throw a piece of candy at him. Yay!
There you go. Commissioner DeLuge, well-deserved honor at FAT Conference for your work at NACO, good presentations and updates there, so thank you very much. I won't be with you at annual, but I hope it goes well, concluding your marathon year. There are a lot of things going right, and even though we won't meet again until September now, as a County Commission, I know we'll see each other in a lot of other events, a lot of other meetings, looking forward to the Summer Youth Lunch on Friday as always. And I just And I just appreciate the good work the county, our partners are doing, and our staff is doing, and I know they will not be resting at all in the next couple of months, so we'll be seeing each other at other meetings, but I hope everyone has a good few weeks, and thank you very much for good me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Max, you can come back. Bill and Kristen are done. Come on back.
Hey, 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 I resemble that comment.
Don't let me in with this.
Commissioner Jackson, you're recognized.
I promise I'll be brief after that. I'd like to make a motion for a proclamation in September, and I'll take a moment of personal privilege, I know that's a ways away, but the District 20 Little League Championship has come back to where it rightfully belongs at Fort Braden Little League.
Great, all right.
I will mention that we did take care of Canopy Oaks, as well as Fred George Representatives in Chairman Daley's district, and also Woodville. And also, also Woodville.
And that is the only thing they might not have.
I believe that there are crickets to the second of that motion. Yes, Commissioner Jackson's made a motion to honor.
And I will echo remarks of Kristen, as well as the other Commissioners. It is in another capacity that I have, I often have to decide what's right and to do what's right. And when you look at us talking about being good stewards of taxpayer money, and you look at us talking about a paid paternity and maternity leave, not only for spouses and not only for husband and wife, but also domestic partners, and we talk about things like animal abuser registry and tattering animals, it's just comforting to see us always circle around to come back and to try to do what's right for the most people possible, and I am also privileged to serve with them. The County Commission, in my short time here, and I've learned so much from all of you, so thank you for the opportunity.
Motion on table for a resolution at September meeting honoring the Little League team coming out of Fort Braden, as seconded by the Vice Chairman. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Commissioner Lindley.
Okay, I also am kind of conic tonight, so not waste any time with the one request I have, which is from the election supervisor's office. They would like to rename the new combined elections headquarters after Ian Sancho, who was, for such a long and effective time, our election supervisor. But I think that to do that, I need to waive the rules to see if we can take action tonight. They want to have a ribbon-cutting on September 21st, and our next meeting is September 12th, so to expedite that, if we could move ahead with a proclamation to waive the rules on that.
So wait, the ribbon-cutting is September 21st?
September 21st, but our next meeting is September 12th, so in order to give them time to get a sign and to get the preparations underway.
Sounds great.
We'd like to waive the rules to go ahead and act on that, vote on that tonight if possible.
Okay, so here's how we're going to do this. First of all, in order to take this up and actually have a vote tonight in a discussion, the first motion on table is to waive the rules, which takes a supermajority, actually, just majority to bring the item forth. Seconded by the Vice Chair, is anybody in objection of waiving the rules? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those, passes unanimously. Okay, now we're in the proper position.
You also have a policy that requires it to come back as an agenda item. You would have to waive that too.
To waive that, okay.
Motion on the table to waive the current policy for discussion of moving forward with immediate action with this naming. Motion was made by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Passes 7-0. Mr. Attorney, are we in the right posture now for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lindley.
And now the motion is proclamation authorizing the supervisor of elections, I guess, to, is it our, is it our authority?
Our.
Our authority to rename?
To dedicate.
To dedicate that building, okay. Sorry for not knowing exactly the ritual here. To dedicate that building in honor of Ian Sancho as the longtime election supervisor.
Motion's been properly made by Commissioner Lindley, seconded by Vice Chair. Commissioner Proctor, you're recognized.
Have you checked in with Russia about this recommendation?
Thanks, yeah, we did.
We were in off here, Mike.
I do have a quick question. Because of the fact that we do not own the building, we are renting the facility, I'm assuming that the name will travel with the Voting Operations Center wherever it is located, not the physical address? Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
He could not name the building that's owned by somebody else.
Right, so even though we're putting the sign out there in the whole nine yards, for instance, 10 years from now, if the Voting Operations Center moved to another facility, it would still be the Ian Sancho Voting Operations Center, is that correct?
I think you would, Mr. Chairman, I think you'd probably do it, technically, you'd probably want to do another dedication, because rather than a naming, because you're right, as you point out, we don't own the building, what they're requesting is that we do a proclamation dedicating the facility. But you're right, related to the ownership issues, I think the only thing you'd want to do probably if it moved was to, if you decided to again dedicate whatever space would ultimately become that space.
Sounds great. Motion on the table, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Lindley.
That's it, thank you very much. Hope you all have a great summer.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have one thing, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Proctor to present it for me, if you will. I have a request for a proclamation to be given out off-site on Friday, August 25th, for the 2017 Family Sports Hall of Fame Enshrinement Ceremony to the inductees. I think there's about nine of them this year, I think, but that is my motion. No, I'm just kidding. I think, I think that, I think there'll be somebody there to present them, but I just wanted to make the motion that those proclamations be present for that event.
Sounds great. Motion's been made for the proclamations made by Commissioner Maddox, Vice Chairman, seconded by the Chair. Anybody in opposition? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, 7-0.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, it's always a privilege and an honor to sit up here amongst you seven giants, or you six giants. And I wanted to say also, we talked a lot about the CRA today, but I'm looking forward to doing exactly what I said before, and that's really focusing on the down, I'm sorry, the Frenchtown South Side CRA and doing some great things there. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Great, I have nothing. Have a wonderful break. We stay in the journey.